I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before many executive sessions, here for that public comment.
Commissioner, if I could, I want to introduce Mr. Glenn Geisler. Glenn is our Director of Finance. He came on board on Monday, so he had exciting a couple of days with us here so far. And he's back, so we look forward to working with Glenn. He'll be a great addition to the county for us.
Thank you.
Mr. Glenn. Can I have a public comment? Nice shirt.
Thank you. Jeff Donco-Palato, as mentioned, Lisa Stevens again, still no update on that. Ms. Gaffney, again, that thing, just her position in itself is becoming a joke. Obviously, she wasn't here again yesterday, but conveniently stood in front of every possible camera, reporter, journalist, to get her name in the paper, on social media, or in the newspaper. She received a call at 10:53, or the text, I guess, the evacuation text at 10:53 on her way to Pottsville. Everybody else had two hours and 23 minutes under the belt in the courthouse. Larry, you said you got a call from Mr. Bender as well. So what elected officials were actually in the building when that occurred? So.
Sheriff is here.
Sheriff. Sheriff goes without saying, she's pretty much here with me today.
No, wait, but first of all, stop, stop. Jeff, once I get on my explain, being county commissioner, I was on a phone conference with my daughter in Cali, working on something about, and my daughter and I were on our way in. And when I heard what the threat was, I had to go find somebody to watch my daughter, because I didn't want to bring her here if the situation was what it was. Do you know what I'm saying? But I'm on phone conferences, you're not, just.
I understand, but the courthouse also isn't a place to bring your child every day. It's not a day care. Okay, but I'm just saying, that was your excuse for not being here. So what I'm saying is, how many elected officials were here when this occurred? Boots, you were on your farm with some high school kids that you pay under the table. Gary was just pulling in, I know he was over DuMaine the whole day. Larry, you weren't here. Teresa wasn't here. How many others weren't here? But they all rushed to the scene, first one to get on camera and get an interview or get their picture in a paper. Oh, we're on top of that. Ninety-some thousand dollars a year out of the taxpayers' pockets, and you just can't show up for work. But the minute there's a bomb threat, applesauce container, whatever you want to call it, let's get there and let's get our name in the paper and photo op. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's all everybody did.
But it is, it is.
That is what I'm trying to say.
If you look when the interview, if you look when the interview was going, hang on, let me finish. If you look when the interview was going on, if you look when the interview was going on.
Jeff, you're right. There, stop. That's all everybody wanted to do. You're right. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Because you're the only one that can run the house.
Thank you, thank you. See?
You are the only person that can run this, because Jeff, the stuff you say sometimes.
I hope the time stops. I hope the time stops.
The stuff you say sometimes is so far, everybody, what solutions do you offer?
Uh, be, be a full-time person. You campaigned as a full-time person.
I am here almost every single day.
Almost every, almost every single day.
Unless I'm, Jeff, unless I'm meeting with other people and doing other stuff.
Okay.
Because you don't have to be, if that's what you want, you want people to sit here from nine to five, punch a time clock, and not advance Scoop and Karen.
You know what? It would be nice to have at least one commissioner here. Do people want to come in and talk to them?
We are. They, people can hold us anytime. Make sure phones out for everyone.
Okay, from eight-thirty yesterday till 10:40, 10:53, how many people, how many commissioners were in this courthouse?
I might not know.
None. Not one. He was on his farm all day. You weren't here, and he was just pulling in as it happened.
And I came here.
So there's none. So it'd be nice to have one here, maybe even a rotating schedule.
We don't.
You know what I mean? These are all campaigning, because we're going to be.
Okay.
It is true. It's a hundred percent true.
I was on the telephone talking to people about assessment problems.
Okay, prior to the incident happening, you were on your farm with some high, with some high school kids that you pay under the table.
Let's move on.
That was confirmed.
Three minutes is up, let's move.
Well, I wasn't even close, I wasn't even close to three minutes.
Just going to share one thing.
So we spoke before about the removing of people from office. So all the commissioners have to do is send a letter to the House of Representatives and the governor. They can request an investigation, eat it up. Failure to keep a positive statutory duty, the Office of Register of Wills, you could be removed. So why not at least do the investigation, even if they throw it out? If you guys don't think it's going to go anywhere, have them do it and throw it out. The taxpayers have had enough. It's absolutely crazy. Ninety-six thousand dollars a year she's getting, and the rest of yous are all falling in line. I had one woman, three people offered me their house in the last month since I got their reassessment paid for, to purchase it. One woman called me in tears with her daughter. Hers went up sixty dollars just for the county. Didn't even get her school stuff yet, and she's like.
How much they go up?
Sixty dollars.
Okay, when we go to Homestead, she's going to get eighty dollars.
She's already on to Homestead.
No, when we do the county Homestead, yeah, her taxes will go down.
Okay, but she also, her school's going to go up? Okay?
No, her school, the reassessment is revenue neutral.
Yes, her school, listen, listen, what you're not understanding is the school district she lives in is going up.
Okay, and what school district?
Uh, School of Haven.
Okay.
They're going up. So what she's saying is, she's, I mean, they're in tears, these elderly people.
But we don't have control of the school districts.
I understand that.
Okay.
But what I'm getting at is the people just can't afford to do it anymore, okay? They're getting hit from every angle, and then we have elected people not showing up for work and just thumbing their nose at the people. It's absolutely unbelievable, and I'll finish up, I'll do the rest on my next three minutes.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Commissioners, my name's Kevin Spawnberg, St. Clair, Pennsylvania. I'm here to speak not only just as a victim of an illegal tax sale, but as a citizen demanding accountability from the very government that caused this harm. In 2022, the county taxing bureau sold my home in St. Clair in an upset sale without providing personal service notice required by the law under the real estate tax sale law. After two and a half years of litigation and no new evidence introduced in my case, the court overturned the sale on March 14th, 2025, confirming that what I argued from day one, the sale was illegal. But that's only the beginning. The bureau's representative, Russell Matsko, committed perjury under oath, claiming personal service wasn't required. A lie. He contradicted in other cases. The county solicitor, Glenn Roth, at the time, knew better and said nothing. One of you commissioners, I don't know which one it was, went down with Solicitor Rice to check out my, my file, but then I came here for the meeting and he said he couldn't talk about it even though it's all public information. They said it was adjudicated, which it wasn't. If your solicitor doesn't know it's adjudicated, is or isn't, I've looked at it in a new solicitor. Instead of following the law, the judge ruled based on perjury testimony and dismissed my, dismissed my motion, and I asked him to recuse himself, and he said that I was just unhappy. Well, yes, I'm unhappy, because it was sold illegally from day one. Nothing was done. And he also blamed it all on me being pro se. Pro se, I believe that's a constitutional right, not a justification for judicial neglect on my behalf. The buyer got a full refund with the county cleaner hands of it, but I'm left with the home built in 2001, one of the nicest in St. Clair. That's now uninhabitable. The mold sport count was 377,000 percent. Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand percent higher than the baseline reading. That makes Chernobyl look like a day spa. Because after I warned the judge, the solicitor, the buyers, through personal filings, through even conversation in our court, last court meeting, and other court meetings about the mold, if they ignored the utilities being shut off, but they didn't. And eight months of darkness went by, and the result of that is cashed off the damage. And to top it all off, the judge tacked on the 2020-24 property taxes into this order. Taxes not even due till 2026. I had to come in here today and pay $350 for 2024 so my property won't go for an upset sale. I'd love to see the judge do that. And all you signed off on the deed, the deed was transferred illegally in April. Every one of you signed a deed, that's the only way it can be transferred. So let's be clear, this mess started because your agency's lies, your attorney's silence, and the judge who either didn't understand the law or didn't care. And I'm the left one picking up the pieces. It's ridiculous. It started with the prorhonotary sending different court records that were timely to seven different addresses. I only have two on file. The ones I received that were at my home address were all right. Then you go to the sheriff, ejected me illegally. Because the case had been adjudicated and it was transferred, and the whole thing was an illegal tax sale. I mean, a judge, it's A or B. If I was owner occupied and I was personally served, it could happen. If I was owner occupied and I wasn't personally served, it can't happen. It's not, this isn't rocket science. And if he can't understand that, and he practiced law and dealt with real estate, then I think you really need to get him off the board. Because it's cost me my job, my livelihood, my family, everything, my reputation. It's ridiculous. I was an auditor for 28 years. And with going right down from the, from the prorhonotary's office straight down to you guys signing the deed, you know what it leads me to believe? There's corruption. Corruption, a lot of it. And everybody's getting kickbacks, because if a judge doesn't know that, there's a problem. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. Melinda Diver, North Manheim Township. Okay, presently, School County is a fourth-class county, which means our population should fall somewhere between 145,000 to 209,999. Okay, is that the case presently? Any of you guys know what our population is as of the last census that was performed in 2020?
143, 142, 143,000.
And, and dropping, so just.
Actually, it's increasing.
It's actually increasing from everything that we're seeing, honestly.
They're, they're thinking, yeah.
Okay, but that's.
Okay, so, okay, in October of 2013, our Senator Dave Argle presented legislation along with, he was actually, I guess, prompted to do this by our former School County prorhonotary, Dave Duck cabbage. May he rest in peace. Dave Duck cabbage, at the time in 2013, was our county prorhonotary. He was asking for Dave Argle to please, can you please sponsor a bill or propose legislation to combine the prorhonotary and the clerk of courts offices? So Dave Argle went along with that, and also another state senator, I believe Alockway is the last name, was a co-sponsor on that. So the legislation would have given county commissioners the option to merge the two offices, clerk of courts and prorhonotary, as the county deems fit. So this is a quote from Dave Duck cabbage. "When I talk to School County residents, they want to see their government function more efficiently. We need to lead by example, and this is my way of addressing the issues that I campaigned for when I first sought public office." State Senator Dave Argle said, "Government on all levels should seek ways to increase efficiencies. At the state level, I am supportive of bills to reduce the size of the general assembly. When families sit around a kitchen table and find a way to make their budget work, I believe governments should do the same thing." This was a quote from our state senator, Dave Argle. Where, where do we stand on this? I'm telling you what, right now, we are headed, School County is headed to become a fifth-class county, not a fourth-class county. So the next census will be in 2030. If our population is below that 145,000 threshold, at that point, because you have to go through two decennial censuses in order for your county to be relegated to a lower class, that is what we're headed for, and at that point, it's a no-brainer that those two offices would be combined. I would like to see Dave Argle jump on his bandwagon again, because we have been beating the drum. Poor Sharon Yackenchick as controller. She's the only one who is religiously here in her office, day in and day out. All other row officers treat their elected positions as, hmm, whatever, maybe, maybe not. If they decide they feel like coming in that day, they do. Otherwise, they're not here. That's telling me those positions, are they really required? And what about first deputies? Somebody told me first deputies aren't reporting. They are considered county employees, and they absolutely should be coming in. So Houston, we got a problem, and the taxpayers and voters of the county are on it. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening. Sue Lee, Pottsville. First off, I'd like to know, do you just get a yearly raise?
I haven't had a raise here in like eight years, eight years.
Uh, well, I get a pitiful raise from Social Security, okay?
Okay.
The pictures that I gave you right there, do you think that house is worth 112,000 dollars? What kind of a house would you classify that as? The assessment office thought it was a Cape Cod. The city tax office told me it was a bungalow. I've looked up both a bungalow and a Cape Cod on Google. It don't look nothing like that.
It's a story.
Excuse me?
It's a story. Is there a room upstairs?
Yes, there is rooms upstairs.
One and a half. One and a half.
Was that a Cape Cod? I mean, look up on your, on your phone, Google Cape Cod and look up bungalow.
We could address this. We addressed it at the last meeting, I think, the bungalow classifications were. Okay.
But I haven't found any house looking like that in, in the city.
Okay.
Do you, would you buy that house for 112,000 dollars?
I guess it would depend on what the inside is and everything, I guess. The way houses are going, we're not going to Monte City, so it depends on whoever wants to buy it.
But what I don't understand is currently this year, my county taxes went up $56.11.
When we do the Homestead, your county taxes will go down.
Okay, but in the year 2026, after this assessment, it's also going up another 255 dollars.
No.
Yeah.
Huh? No. No.
Yes, according to my assessment paper, I paid a hundred and seventy-three dollars. But currently, it's going up to over four hundred dollars. That's two hundred and fifty-five dollars in my eyes, the way I do math.
I thought you just said it was going up fifty-three bucks this year.
This year, went up fifty-six dollars and eleven cents.
Now, I understand, okay.
Now with this assessment, it's going up another two hundred and fifty-five dollars. I'm on senior citizen, I'm on Social Security. Believe you me, Social Security, I can't say the word, okay? It's terrible. For you to be raising these taxes on senior citizens is atrocious. You're putting seniors out of their homes. I don't have your, I don't get your salaries. I'm far from your salaries. Your salaries are probably five to six times more than mine than I'm getting off of Social Security. And I think it's terrible. You can have those cards too, thank you.
Any other public comment? Before Tim Bar goes?
Good evening. Pleasure to be here tonight for evening meeting and folks that are watching at home. I'm Tim Bar with Vision Government Solutions, the company conducting the property reassessment with the county, with the board of the county in Skookel. So, I'll give an update on several different things. We have completed all of the informal reviews. Notices were mailed over the last month and a half or so to every property in the county. They got their new estimate of value, they got their tax estimate for county and the old versus the new on the county tax. And all of those were mailed. The property owners were given the chance to call our toll-free number to schedule an informal review. I will be honest, we did not get as many as I expected. Out of ninety-two thousand properties, there's a lot of exempts, there's a lot of vacant land. We did have very effective informal reviews on about thirty-four hundred parcels out of the county. But I was expecting two to three times that many, to be honest with you. And that could be because folks are looking on the county website and they're seeing the data there. And they know that we can only debate value, I'm sorry. We can only discuss data at an informal review. The law prohibits debating value at an informal review, and we've been telling everybody that. So they might be skipping and going straight to a formal appeal because the data's okay and they just don't agree with the value. We don't know, but we worked hard to address the thirty-four hundred properties that contacted us. Forty-nine percent of those were in person and came to the SDS building, former SDS building. And forty-five percent were by telephone, where we made an appointment, we called them back. And six percent did it via email back and forth. So, it was a great opportunity for us to learn some things. We also learned things during the last six or eight weeks that allowed me to revisit some of the rates. So there were some batch value changes that we made. We found some clerical errors in some of the coding that we had done that affected multiple properties. So, your value that you get from the county, which we'll talk about in a second, the official value, will not necessarily be the same as what we mailed you as a preliminary. Could be less, it could be a little more, it depends on what we found and what we corrected and improved. But the goal is to have the probable typical selling price for each property in the county. So, the next step in this whole process is that on or before July first, we will be mailing, I should say the county will be mailing, assuming that the item on the agenda is approved. There's an item on the agenda tonight where the commissioners are going to instruct me and the assessment office to print and mail ninety-two thousand pieces of official change of assessment notices to all the properties in the county. That will start the official formal appeal window. Owners have forty days from the date we put it in the mail. That's going to land on August eleventh. So Monday, August eleventh would be the last chance for someone to file a formal appeal form this year before any of this takes effect. I encourage people to appeal. If they're going to appeal, do so quickly so that the assessment office can start scheduling you right away. You will need a formal appeal if you disagree with the value. If you did not go to an informal review and you wanted to present data about the property, you can do that at a formal appeal. There are, let me give a quick example of something that we're finding. There are a lot of commercial properties in this county that when you look outside, you see the sign, you see what it was. It may not be open today, but you can't tell whether it closed last week or five years ago. The data collectors don't know whether it's vacant and how long it's been vacant. So unless a commercial building owner comes to us and tells us about the inside, about the condition, about the vacancy, are they unable to rent it, do they try to sell it? Absent any of that information, we're going to value it based on its use. Retail, store, apartment, warehouse. And that value's going to probably be too high if it's not currently rented and hasn't been for a while. And we know that, and we encourage people to do informal reviews. And we will make sure the formal appeal boards are very cognizant of this too, so that if somebody comes in with a property that is not currently rented, it's not currently producing an income stream, I'm talking about commercials here, that those can be corrected easily at the formal appeals, even without getting into value debate or appraisals. There's no incentive for anybody, the county, the vendor, the commissioners, to make values higher than what we all think it would be likely to sell for. And that's because of the revenue-neutral nature of this. Any values that get reduced between now and November fifteenth, when these new values will be certified by the assessment office and the direction of the commissioners, any changes that happen just become part of the adjustment. And the county doesn't get any more money, neither do the schools and the municipalities. They all over their mileage rate by whatever the increase was. So if the increase is a little less due to appeal adjustments, that's normal. That's what happens every reassessment. So, the July first value notice will not only have the old value and the new value, it will have a land and a building value breakdown. You can't appeal the pieces, but we do tell you what the allocation was on land versus building. It will also have your current clean and green status. So if you're enrolled in clean and green, it will tell you that, and it will give you your clean and green value. It gives you your market value too. Because if you're in clean and green, although you don't pay taxes on the market value, a potential rollback is based on that. So if you think the market value's wrong, even if you're in clean and green, you're welcome to appeal a market value even though it's not used for taxes. The notice will also have a combined tax impact. Let me explain briefly what I mean by that. The earlier one was county-only. The, Sue gave the example, your county estimate went from one seventy-three to four hundred and some. That's the county only. We're going to tell you, first of all, the value might be different July one from all these changes we've made. So, everybody just wait till you get your notice after the first of July. When you get that notice, it's going to have a new estimate that is the sum of the county municipal and school taxes combined. So it's the big picture. What are you paying this year in county, municipal, which is the spring bill plus the school bill, all lumped into one number? And then what do we think the sum of the three would be for next year? It's not broken down, they're just estimates. But we're going to give you this full-picture estimate. So, you don't have to wonder, oh yeah, but the school might be twice what we're saying. You know, the county goes up a hundred dollars. If you think the school's going to go up thousands of dollars, it's not likely to do that. If the county goes up a hundred, maybe the school goes up five hundred. There's a typical one-to-five ratio there. Whatever it is, we're going to tell you that on these official notices with a tax impact. And then the third thing is, we're going to include in the estimates the new homestead exclusion. I don't think it's been acted on at a meeting yet to make it official, but the commissioners have been putting forth at a previous meeting to do twenty-thousand-dollar homestead exclusion at the county level. So let me take thirty seconds to explain this. If you're already in homestead, that means you own or occupy your property. You're resident of the county, this is your primary residence. You're already getting a school deduction for being a resident of the county and having applied for the homestead program. The county is going to do the same thing. And it will amount to approximately eighty dollars on a county tax bill. The first twenty thousand dollars of value won't be taxed. So if someone lives in a hundred-thousand-dollar property, they'll pay taxes on eighty thousand. If they live in a twenty-thousand-dollar mobile home or leasehold or less, they'll pay no county taxes. It helps the folks that are in the less expensive homes. To take, you know, a bill that's three, four hundred dollars and knock eighty dollars of it is a bigger deal than knocking eighty dollars off of a three-thousand-dollar bill on a larger, more expensive home. So it's very progressive. But it's permitted under Pennsylvania law to do this. And the commissioners are doing this to try to help the residents of the county on the less expensive properties in particular. That will be part of the estimate, so we're giving you the full picture on that as well. I mentioned that the deadline to appeal would be August eleventh. When you file an appeal, you will be meeting, it's not a court proceeding. You do not need a lawyer. If you want to bring an appraisal, whether it's a recent one or one that you've had done in the last three years, bring that. If you want to do your own research of what properties you're selling for in your area, bring that. Come to the formal appeal with either descriptive information that you could or should have presented at an informal review or value information that you can present to the appeal board. They will not reduce it just because you came in. They won't set it at just whatever the appraisal sets. They will look at the details of that appraisal and compare it against the details of what's been gathered from the reassessment and then make a decision. That's why there's three people on the panel. And there's six panels total, up to six panels, to make those reviews and revisions during August, September, and October. Last item I have on my agenda is, there are professionals in this county, lawyers, appraisers, real estate experts, that are asking the question, well, how have the values arrived at? And there's a certain percentage of people in the county that assume we made them up. It feels like that sometimes when you see a number, you know. I take to heart the question, is this worth a hundred and twelve thousand dollars? I don't know without looking at it, but that's what we're saying we think it's worth right now, based on the data that we have. And I don't know whether she got an informal review or not, but hopefully everybody went through that part of the process. And if they need to go to the next part of the process, I hope they do. The opinion of value that we put on these does come from a lot of research. I am going to be conducting for professionals that must get clearance through the commissioner's office to attend because this is a class. This is a three-hour seminar that I am going to conduct for local professionals in the county. Why? So that they can help the property owners go through this process with the appraisals that they might need to do, that the evaluating whether the values seem reasonable, knowing what affects the value and what doesn't. You know, what can change the value? Nobody can appeal the pieces, but it helps to explain the pieces. And there will be some excerpt of that three-hour worth of material that we'll try to distill into something that we can put on the county website. But it literally takes me three hours to scratch the surface of what mass appraisal entails and what goes into that. So, it's not a public meeting, but I wanted to let you know that we're going to do that to help the professionals in the county help you, the folks at home, go through this process. The appeal boards themselves will get a similar version of that three-hour class so that all the appeal boards have the same information. They also get six hours of training from the state on what it is to be an appeal board member and what their duties and responsibilities are. So they get that class first, and then they get another three hours for that. Any questions that the commissioners have or?
On July first, we're still looking at, to go live, that people will be able to see their new values, the old values, and their neighbors' values and everything.
Correct. On the county website right now, we update it every Sunday. The most current ownership will be there again on the Sunday and the physical descriptions. Old values are there now. Come July first, when we put these in the mail, might be a day or two after that, but it'll be before people receive them because it'll take a couple of days for the post office to get, for them to travel. You'll be able to go look at other people's values too. The best, you can see the sales now, and you can compare against other assessments. I'll be honest, it's a little more anecdotal. Might give you a comfort level if you're like, well, that house is nicer than mine and I can see that they put a higher value on that. That's helpful to people. It's not terribly helpful in an appeal because it's not evidence of a sale, unless the property you're talking about also happened to sell. But we're trying to be very open. Oh, I do have one other piece of information to share. The county hired a third-party independent analyst with the International Association of Assessing Officers to study the old values before the reassessment when they were fighting it, to see if they could stop and not have to do a reassessment. And then, of course, the consent decree, the court approved, said the reassessment had to happen. They've hired to have that same study done again, testing my values. And I say my values because I'm just the project director, I'm only one of a member of a tremendous team at Vision, but I'm ultimately responsible and we've worked really hard to get values that overall statistically met international standards. And we're pleased that the results came in and we got an early draft of it earlier today. And it meets the standards. Doesn't mean everything's perfect. Doesn't mean every property's right. That's not what this kind of study is for. But it tells us that overall, we're near a hundred percent of value, which is where we're supposed to be. The average error is not only way less than it used to be, but it's within the standards. And even the regressivity, which is, did we penalize people that are in cheaper homes versus more expensive homes? All of that, we got great scores on. It's not perfect. If it were perfect, you'd be suspicious of it. There are some areas that we'll try to review and improve during the appeals process, potentially even. Have the boards keep an eye out for. But where we weren't quite perfect, we were low. We were actually under what they're selling for. And I think that's partially due to people paying too much for some of the properties coming in the area. So I don't feel terribly bad about being a little bit low on the values, to be honest with you. But at least they're still within the bounds of the standard. So, we got a draft of that. I'm sure once they send the official version, I'm sure the county will make it available for public review.
Tim, if you don't mind, could you please, for people who might be listening at home, could you please provide, if you have it, the deadline? I know it's too late for this year, but for anyone who might want to apply for that homestead, the homestead exclusion program?
March first of each year.
Okay.
And the clean and green deadline is October fifteenth of this year for next year. The deadline is March first of next year for twenty-seven. So if you're not currently signed up for homestead, be sure when you get, the schools will mail you an invite. They do it every December. When you get your invite in December or January, fill it out, send it in for your primary house only. You don't get it for every house you own. And if you're vacationer here, you don't get it. You have to be a resident of the county if you're primary residence. But thank you for drawing attention to that.
And that's a one-time thing? Once they do it through the school?
That's it.
The assessment office manages it. They don't do it through the school, they do it with the assessment office. And once you're signed up, you're in the program. What's happening is, it's going to be used by the school and the county now instead of just the school using that enrollment roll.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, a public comment, I want to talk about the incident that happened here with the scare. More information on it is that somebody came into our public entrance, informed the sheriff that there was something suspicious outside, on the wall, outside the courthouse. Two, the sheriffs went to investigate. They said they thought that the item was smoking. They called the Pottsville Police, which in turn then called the state police bomb squad. ATF was here, Pottsville Police, our local fire companies. Now I know because it ended up being a can of applesauce or whatever it was. It wasn't a bomb, which is good. It's good that it wasn't, I'm happy it wasn't. It's a little comical what it was, but we erred on the side of caution because if it would have been something, the outcome could have come catastrophic. So, I want to commend our sheriff's office for everything they did. I want to commend the local police, the Pottsville Police, were excellent. They had a drone up here. The state police bomb squad were here. The ATF, ATF was here. They did a great job. I want to thank the- They did a great job. I want to thank the humane, because they took our employees in, you know, gave them water, everything. And I want to thank our employees and everybody. Thank, we evacuated probably roughly three hundred people out of the courthouse without any major incident, nobody being hurt. We had three trials going on, three trials, three juries. I want to thank S T S, because some, they want to release people out of the parking lots, and we told people if they wanted to go home, they could. So S T S, we asked them to bring, uh, buses here, and they sh- they shut the people home if they wanted, but we take them home. And they also then, so the jurors didn't have to walk across parking lots and down curbs. We shuttled all the jurors up to the main entrance, everybody. Our E M A, everybody did their job excellent, and I'm actually, I'm happy that it was nothing. Because if it was something, it could have been a lot worse, somebody could have lost their life, a ton of damage. You know, it just shows, you gotta take, the county has to take every situation like this seriously. And it was, and I think it was handled appropriately by everybody involved, and I just want to thank them and commend them all for it. And, you know, our staff did a great job. It was just, it, it was a stressful situation, but it resolved. Thank God we didn't think we were advised that when they did x-ray, x-rayed the can, they thought it looked like manual material in it when they x-rayed it. It was never detonated, it never exploded, it was pierced with a water cannon shot to vent it. And it turned out to be nothing. It turned out not to be anything dangerous, but all proper procedures were taken. So I just want to commend everybody that was involved. All my fellow commissioners have anything to say?
No, I think you pretty well covered it, Larry. Again, uh, everyone leaving the building in the appropriate manner and so forth, and, uh, again, to, to go into the proper places. And I know in the past, we, we go through drills, uh, all those things, even active shooter. We've had that in the past, so you, you never, you never know. But again, the cooperation of all the employees, and again, all the first responders. Uh, yeah, again, we can't do without them, and especially our one neighbor across the street, which was very graciousness to, uh, to host all of our employees. So, uh, the commissioner has said it that pretty well, you know, all in one nutshell. Uh, this, this, again, you gotta take precautions. You see things all around, not just this country, but around this world, and you don't know. And we gotta protect our people that are in here, the people that are coming in, so, so, uh, we appreciate that, and thank God it wasn't, uh, what, uh, you listed, Dave, so, appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Hassan, Mr. Provo said that great job with the University of Manhattan people. Uh, we participated several times in mock disaster drills, whether it's flood, hurricane, third, power plant disaster. What that does is each of the groups that are there, there's the law enforcement, the sheriffs, first responders, all practice what they would have to do during a disaster like that took place. And the bottom line is because of that training. And every time we do it, the people from Washington DC, from FEMA, come in, always commit how well our operations. So I can see always, like Larry's saying, you know, that never happens, but obviously when we, does happen like that, everyone was prepared and did the right job, so, all right, that's a lot of things.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the commissioner's meeting?
So, sir.
May twenty-eighth. One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the morning session minute, beginning, minutes, if you will afford?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the map editor's at a morning session?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by mental health, uh, services at a morning session? So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Uh, can I motion to approve what was presented by tax assessment? And also to approve the request for the printing and mailing of the official reassessment value change notice.
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by adult probation?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the real estate firm?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by the risk manager?
So.
Second.
Question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by engineering?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented in a morning session on the master department?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented by risk management?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve what was presented on behalf of our county administrator?
So.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I have a motion, consult information? Can I motion to approve what was presented by the finance office?
So.
Oh, we don't need to do that. Okay. On behalf of, right, no, the county clerk is under the county administrator. It's, you know, on both. Yeah, I think both of them. Okay. For information purposes, uh, can I motion to approve what was presented by solicitor's office?
So.
Okay.
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Can I have resources?
Yes, uh, good evening commissioners. Uh, children and youth, we have two items, both appointments, Stan Yellen, Worts, and Jennifer Thompson, both as clerk type is two, both have the rate of sixteen point six six eight zero, both effective six twenty-three, twenty-five, rate is per contract. Also in children and youth, the transfer of Lena Seltzer to a clerk type is two, coming from secretary two in court admin, the rate is per the contract, and that rate is sixteen point six six eight zero, that is effective six sixteen twenty-five. In communications, the appointment of Thomas Shern, telecommunicator per diem, the rate is twenty dollars, the effective date is six sixteen twenty-five. In human services, the appointment of Alicia Santos as a clerk type is two, rate is fifteen point two two one five, that is effective six twenty-three, twenty-five. Uh, in addition, we have some informational items, two in the district attorney's office. There are appointments of unpaid interns by the name, uh, Madison Kramer and Nicole Yost, that's effective six nine twenty-five for both, pending eight fifteen twenty-five for both. In juvenile probation, we have two actions, the promotion of Jamie O'Brien, the juvenile probation officer two, effective six sixteen twenty-five, rate is per the contract. And the appointment of Damon Yost as a juvenile probation officer one, effective six sixteen twenty-five, rate is per the contract. Two items in clerk of courts, the transfer of Colleen Wormcastle to the clerk, reposition from clerk two, rate is per the union contract. That's effective six thirty twenty-five. And also in clerk of courts, the appointment of Anne DeTolo, clerk two, effective six thirty twenty-five, rate is per the union contract. All appointments pending drug tests and physical were appropriate. All actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary award approval.
Can I motion for the three children and youth and the communications to do the human services?
So, sir.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Can I have a motion to withdraw?
So, sir.
Salary board, the board of any executive sessions?
There were none.
Public comment for salary board?
I had a comment, um.
Public comment?
Ms. Gary, yes, well, no.
Oh.
Ms. Gary Pedder was infected, he was saying he didn't have a good opening today through bonfire. He usually makes that announcement, so.
Okay.
But he was. Oh, sorry.
Jeff Tommo Palavalto, uh, speaking of the incident yesterday, is there a reason why all county employees weren't notified of the evacuation?
As far as I know, that's.
Okay, so everybody in the other buildings should have been notified?
No.
No.
Okay. So if those employees in the other buildings had business to do here, they weren't notified at all?
Yeah, but everybody notified on, on Facebook.
And the roads were, they had.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, I've got messages from employees asking.
I know, but the building was locked down. Um, there was horses everywhere, there were two people everywhere, couldn't access the building.
Okay.
So, two of the offices, children and youth, the other building, they were still.
Okay. Their employees weren't notified that the courthouse was shut down? Is what I'm getting at? That's all?
I, I don't believe so. But they went and did tell them, I think, and I asked them, they were down. They were, I, I believe they were.
Apparently that number ten can, uh, some people don't know what that means, but that number ten can was there for several days. Uh, so I'm not sure if that's true or not, but just so happens to be June sixth was National Applesauce Cake Day, so somebody must have put it there.
I think, I suppose somebody, somebody was carrying it.
Broken.
And broke or dropped it, it got detonated, and they sat it down, and somebody saw it and thought it was smoking and suspicious and turned it in. That's just what I thought, and yes, you are, I.
Better be safe than sorry.
We got reports that somebody said they might have saw it on the weekend, and then we had reports saying that guy that parks right by there said, no, he never saw it until that day. So it's been kind of.
Hopefully there's cameras, I don't want to ask that on record, but hopefully there's cameras that cover that area for future. Uh, touching on what Mr. Bar said, uh, there's going to be professionals approved by the commissioners to sit in on how they rate these properties and value the properties. My concern is, why can the average taxpayer not be privy to that information? He said they'll break down some of that and give it out to the public possibly on the website. Why, why wouldn't they be privy to that or have another session like at the high school, so that the actual taxpayers can understand this? And get a better breakdown.
What we were trying to do is to help the people that are going to help people through their formal appeals have all the information. And Tim, well, Tim, uh, Dave Dunn and Adam, that's how he said they handled it in other counties when they did reassess.
I get that. So I, I.
That's what I'm saying.
My concern is with the taxpayers, they're already getting hit with an increase, most of them. Now they're gonna have to pay one of these professionals to get information that's not available to them, but only available to these professionals, and they have to be approved by you guys. I, I just think that's taking away from the taxpayers and their ability to know how this rating. I've questioned it numerous times. I have a property that was nineteen thousand, it's up to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand now. I, I would like to know how they came up with that evaluation. First I was told the bedrooms and bathrooms, now I'm told that don't even matter.
Jeff, you've been appointed to a, I think you want to be careful about.
How you summon them.
Okay, I'm just, you're gonna under, you're gonna undergo training and so forth.
Like, I, I'd never do this, but I'm gonna ask you, because as of a few minutes ago, you've been appointed, now just be sensitive to that fact, and you may come.
Yeah, because you're.
Okay, I was told that was effective after the training and after.
No, but I, you're officially appointed after tonight. You, you, we took official action avoiding you, Melinda, tonight.
So is that, so then that silences me for a.
No, it doesn't silence you, we just, we're not saying it silences you, Jeff, but someone said something about the values and everything, because you don't want to show a bias if you're on the appeal. If somebody comes in and say, Jeff's saying this in a meeting, and he didn't let me, he didn't agree with my appeal, that's all, like, you know what I'm saying, like.
I'll rescind my appointment. Thank you anyway. Have a good night.
Okay.
Make that official, and you should hold on. You're not gonna shut me up for the taxpayers, until you're in that meeting.
Yeah, it's not about shutting you up, so.
He will let me speak my mind, he says, it's not what you're doing, you're an employee.
No, he didn't, he said.
Nobody said you can't speak your mind, we're asking you to be sensitive to the fact that you were.
On an appeals board, what'd you ask to be on?
I did, correct?
Okay.
Yes. Actually, I was asked to be on at first.
Yeah, I had no problem, I, I'm fine with you being on, Jeff. If you don't want to rescind your fate, it's just, all he's saying is just be mindful, because you're gonna be on board with three people, and you don't want anybody to be able to accuse anybody of being unbiased in any way. That's all Paul is advising you, so. So just, I'll let you think about it to the next meeting, okay? Is there any other public comment for salary board?
Um, Melinda Dibert, North Mannheim Township, uh, not to keep beating a dead horse, but that poor old horse is gonna keep getting beat.
Why stop now?
There you go. When you're on a roll, you keep going. Okay. Um, row officers, uh, not showing up for their jobs. And I'm gonna look more into this, because it's just recently come to my attention that maybe some of the first deputies are also not putting in at least thirty-two hours per week. Um, that, they are county employees. I know first deputies are, they're not in the union, so they have no protections, et cetera, uh, as union employees, and they are appointed at the discretion of the individual independently elected row officer. Those individuals cannot adopt the attitude that some of these row officers have, that I, I don't have to come in. I'm elected, I'm gonna receive my same rate of pay, whether I actually show up in person to do my job or not. First deputies do not have that luxury. They are considered county employees and receive, uh, county benefits, whether that be their retirement, um, their health insurance, et cetera. They are required to show up and do their job. So I am gonna be looking into that a little bit more, because I was under the impression it was row officers and not their first deputies as well. Um, and, and I do want to give credit where credit is due, and like I said, Sharon, I think, is one of the only row officers who consistently shows up to put the time in. And having been a former county controller, that is one position that I believe you absolutely, it's, it's almost a twenty-four seven job. You take a lot of that home with you, that you're constantly, uh, looking into, I mean, it's, it's a massive undertaking to be controller. And unfortunately, some of these other offices, I guess, what, they just don't have enough work to do, or they don't have to be there to do the job? That's a travesty. And I believe a lot of taxpayers and voters in this county are unaware that this practice is going on. So we intend to get the word out and to let people know that this is who is showing up to do the job. These are, this is the long list of people who are not showing up to do the job that you were elected to do. Thank you.
Any other public comment for salary board?
Oh, okay. Uh, can I motion to approve the minutes from the salary board meeting of May twenty-sixth, eighth?
You mean fourteen?
No, you're on the title.
Oh, sure, oh, oh, sure.
You're on salary board.
All right, sorry.
May twenty-eighth. Yeah, me looking like, what?
Motion to approve, May twenty-eighth.
Second. One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Sorry, sir.
Can I motion to approve the minutes from the June fourth?
So, sir.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Controller.
Oh, controller, you can't check, yes. Sorry.
She's covered with that, she's done a good job. She's done a good job. Human resource office?
Yes, officials, we have three items. In communications, set salary for Thomas Shern, telecommunicator per diem, the rate is twenty dollars, effective six sixteen twenty-five. In human services, set salary for Alicia Santos, clerk type is two, rate is fifteen point two two one five, effective six sixteen twenty-five. And juvenile probation, set salary for Jamie O'Brien, juvenile probation officer two, rate is twenty-eight point two five one six, effective six sixteen twenty-five.
Can I motion first for the communications and human services? So, sir.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Controller, you can't check.
Yes.
Okay, can I motion for the juvenile probation setting it up?
So, move.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Controller, you can't check. Yes. And Joe Trump.
Okay, any new business for salary board?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Thank you, retirement board, report of any executive sessions, though? Any public comment for salary board?
No, sir.
Get re-passed.
Retirement.
Oh, retirement board, sorry. Retirement board, can I have a motion to approve the May fourteen minutes?
The May fourteen minutes, the retirement board, yes, sir, motion.
Second.
One question?
Commissioner Pedora. Commissioner Pador.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Sharon McEntick, yes. Wendy Gatt.
Controllers report.
Willie.
Willie.
Okay, the retirement board report. As of May twenty-twenty-five, three members received retirements equivalent to one million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, with a prorata of payment of nine thousand, two hundred and seventy. Four members received refunds of three thousand, one hundred and forty-two. Five beneficiaries of a deceased retiree received twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-four. And three deceased retirees, uh, beneficiaries received prorata payments of three hundred and fifteen dollars. The market value of the retirement fund as May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, was one hundred, one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, nine, oh, we'll read that one up, sorry, guys. One hundred and seventy million, sorry, heart's dropped, one hundred and seventy million, two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and one dollar. And the balance of the retirement fund as of today, June eleventh, is one hundred and seventy-one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
I think that's hard to hear.
Our boss on Ashka was like, what just happened?
Did you see him look up?
Like, what? Is there any new business for retirement board? Motion, sir, sir. Oh, sorry, can we have a motion to approve the controllers' report?
Make motion to approve the controller's report.
Second.
On a question?
Commissioner Pador.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherton.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Controller, Sharon, Kent, yes. Treasure, Linda, Gatt.
Any new business? Can I motion for? You know what I'm saying, that's all he's trying to hide you.